To order, would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, Commissioners, first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any comments on the agenda? More motion hearing, none?
I move the approval of the agenda for tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Higgins, seconded by Kirk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimously approved. Second on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the Monday, August 27th, 2018 Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, any comments on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the planning commission minutes dated August 27th, 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Kirk, seconded by Higgins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have no informational meetings or public meetings. Onto the public hearings, we have one public hearing this evening for Smith Village located at 16389 and 16397 Glory Lane. This is a request for a guide plan change from industrial and church cemetery to medium-high-density residential and 7.16 acres. Planned unit development concept review on 7.16 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 7.16 acres. Zoning district change from PUB and IGEN to RM 2.5 on 7.16 acres. Site plan review on 7.16 acres and a preliminary plat from two lots to five lots and one outlot on 7.16 acres. The way we'll run the public hearing tonight is we'll ask the applicant to come up and make a presentation of the project for us. Then I'd like staff to do a staff report to the Commissioners. Then we'll have an opportunity to ask some questions to the applicant and staff as needed, Commissioners. Then I'd like to ask, open up the podium for public input for the people that are here that would like to make comment. So we'll start off with the applicant's presentation. If you want to address the podium and let us know your name and company, we'd appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, my name is Mark Nelson with United Properties. We're at 651 Nicollet Mall in Minneapolis. I am primarily responsible for the senior housing division of United Properties and we are acting as kind of the master developer of this seven-acre site. We've got a lot of project team here and other developer representatives, but I think in the interest of time, I was asked to kind of take over the whole project and then if there are questions or if we need additional color or detail from other team members, we'll have them step up if that's okay. So I think I'm ready to roll if... Okay, so the only thing I don't know is from this position, is there, am I able to cursor onto the sites at all with this or should I be at the computer?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, it's more functional if he's able to do that from the cursor, from the mouse.
From the computer?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
I apologize for not looking at you from here, but I don't know if it'd be better...
Or maybe if...
Okay, oh, that'd be great.
That'll be fine, Seal. Okay. And if I can interrupt you, Mr. Nelson, for a second. How's the audio back there for everybody? Can everybody hear okay? Having a little difficulty? Okay, yeah, we could have the AV raise the audio on the podium mic, please. Why don't you do a little test, one, two, three, for us now?
Yeah, test, okay. Hello? Hello, how are we doing that? I can try to speak up too, sorry about that.
I think that's an improvement.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right. So we'll just jump right into it here. So I've got a kind of an overall aerial of the site here. So in red is kind of showing you where this site is. It's essentially the entire Resurrection Life Church site. So they currently have two lots, a vacant piece of land, which is really what we originally started looking at, and then also the land that the church itself is on. This project, over time, has kind of evolved and grown beyond just what United Properties was looking to develop and that's why we've got kind of these additional development partners. But we really, really like this site a lot, just given the connectivity. We're sitting right on that regional trail system for activities for independent seniors and other activities here, right across from Miller Park, you know, being near the highways, 212 and 5, great access to the surrounding areas and then, of course, all the retail and service amenities up at Highway 5 and Eden Prairie Road is all why we are here talking about this tonight. So I'll flip to the next page here. So generally speaking, this is the overall site plan. We are really asking, I guess, or talking about tonight about creating a new neighborhood here. We're very excited about kind of that new opportunity to really bring some inclusivity, some true intergenerational and mixed income and product types. We'll have for-sale homes here, we'll have rental apartments here, all kind of working together on a very, kind of, I think, creative basis. So up in the, kind of, the northwest corner, I guess, of this site, so the larger, kind of, U-shaped building is what is planned to be the Applewood Point Cooperative. That'll be a 100-unit building. We are proposing a total of 164 homes here on that little over seven acres. In the middle section of the site there, I guess I don't know if you guys are seeing any kind of cursor there, is an area for six custom townhomes. And then the apartment building, kind of paralleling Eden Prairie Road, is the workforce housing apartment of 58 homes. We have kind of connected the entire property here through trails and shared amenities and common space. We're sharing stormwater, we're sharing parking, all of those types of things. The front piece, just north of the proposed apartment building, is the current Huber Funeral Home. We're showing that, that's not technically part of the redevelopment here, we're showing that though because they have been very supportive of our process here and they have offered to allow event and overflow parking in their parking lot as kind of an additional kind of safety net, I guess, if you will, even though we think we're fairly well parked here for the overall site. So the site is accessed off of Glory Lane, which is just to the north of the apartment building there. That's a private road that's proposed to kind of remain private right now. It's currently kind of maintained between Huber and the current church and so we will modify that to kind of keep the maintenance within the entire new redevelopment here. Entry to the site, I guess I'll get into kind of as I go through the components, what I'd like to do is just kind of pull a little more detail to you here throughout the presentation to try to kind of get you some more details. So I'll start with the Applewood Cooperative up in the right-hand side there. So this is just a rendering of kind of the front entry area, if you will. We currently have 12 senior cooperatives open in the Twin Cities, three more are under construction, so if approved, this would be number 16, if I'm going to tell you not to do math in public, but I think that's right. Number 16 for us. So this is an independent senior for-sale product, so it's similar to a condominium, but it's a cooperative and what simply that is, is just the financing structure. So we obtain one master mortgage for the entire property. It's a HUD guaranteed master mortgage, which gives us a 40-year fixed rate loan, which helps kind of reduce the monthly payments for our seniors and makes it real easy on the for-sale side, the resale side of the cooperative. So we are proposing 10 homes, or 10% then of this community, would have homes priced at the 80% area median income to kind of add some inclusivity here. The homes will range from about 1,100 to just shy of 1,900 square feet and the value of those homes then would be just under $235,000 to just over $500,000 in value. All the homes are two bedrooms. 80% of the homes will be two-bedroom plus a den or sunroom. So their average size is about 1,500 square feet, so fairly large homes, just dictated by what the market is looking for. Majority of our parking is underground, so we do provide a little bit more than one parking stall per home underground and then the remainder in the surface, which I'll kind of walk through here on the next slide. So access coming into the site then is kind of in the middle of the site off of Glory Lane. We've got a one-way system both in the garage and at the front entry, so as you come in and take a right, you'll enter the garage and then everyone kind of enters and then exits on the west side of the garage. And the same thing with the front entry, so you'll come in, kind of go around, kind of counterclockwise essentially, both at the front door and in the garage. This graphic is showing just generally kind of the stepping of the building, so we've taken a little bit of, yes, a little detour, I guess I'd say, on our architecture typically. What we're trying to do is kind of react to some preliminary feedback that we received. There was some concern about potential massing up against the Smith House on the kind of west side of this and so that's where we will see, we've taken the building kind of from a two up to a three, up to a four-story as we wrap around that Smith House edge, putting the five-story component back where the industrial is. We've got an industrial neighbor to the rear and then along the trail. And then we drop down again on the end of the building to kind of mimic the architecture there, back down to four stories. You'll see on the back side essentially, we concentrate most of our common area into the center core of the building and so you'll see where it says outdoor plaza and fireplace and that is truly common area. We'll have some grills back there. What's not clear on this plan is as you walk around the building on the north and west sides, we do have a path back there and we do have some spaces for activating greens areas and I'll show you that as we get a little bit further, but we do want to integrate our common areas with the interior and the exterior. So this is just a quick kind of guide of what it could look like on the inside. We're not 100% done with our interior designing, of course, but kind of a two-story lobby. You'll see kind of an ability to see all the way through the building to that rear area I was just describing. So we do have kind of a great room, which is a big community room. Parlor up on the second floor is a club room, which is kind of more of a party and private type of room, but still used for the residents. So we do have a fitness center, we've got a library, we've got craft rooms and hobby shops and guest suites, all of those amenities that are really kind of what make this product a little bit unique, I think, in the market. So what we're really trying to promote is a lifestyle that's not just about the bricks and mortar, but it's really about the living and the lifestyle for the active seniors. We can go on. So this is just kind of a collage of a few things. You'll see kind of on the top three or so pictures is what we're talking about as far as activating kind of that, that, think of it, I don't want to think of it as a rear part of the building, but really the north and kind of west ends as the path comes around from that common plaza. So we're going to kind of expand our exercise equipment back outside and maybe do something like bocce ball and a few other things. In the center of this is a picture of some garden areas, which we have on-site from another community. And then later in the presentation here, I'll show you kind of where we've got some play areas for the kind of grander neighborhood we're creating and also some areas for some public art possibilities. So finally, on the co-op then, this is just a quick kind of rendering of what the building could look like here from the Smith House parking lot. So you're kind of looking directly east past the parking lot, so on your left-hand side is kind of that four-story element as it's dropping down to the right-hand side, three-story element and then the two-story element, kind of getting lost in the trees there. But we will have a robust landscape plan kind of between us and that parking lot, not only for screening of the Smith House patrons, but also our residents kind of looking the other way at the parking lot, so I think we've accomplished that very well. So moving on then, so towards the center of the site. So again, you'll kind of see coming off of Glory Lane, that access into the co-op is also shared for the townhome folks, so they'll just take a right kind of coming around the corner into what is the townhome area. We've got six townhomes planned. They're all walkout rambler style, so they're only going to be one story kind of as you come in, but then they'll fall off and have a walkout on the trail side down the slope from the site. All be three-bedroom, possibly a two-bedroom den, they're all kind of customized for the body. And obviously have parking within their garages as well with some shared parking out front. Price point will, should be on average in the 600,000s range, depending on ultimate finishes and things. They'll probably be somewhere between 2,800 and 3,200 finished square feet in these homes. And then out front of this area is a shared kind of green area, you know, that is a public area, it's a bit of a rain garden and a sitting area and a spot that will have some of the public art that we're putting into kind of the overall neighborhood. Let me go to the next slide here. So we're partnering with Holly Homes or Holly Land Corporation. You know, Mr. Holly's been doing this type of thing since 1978, has done well over 200 custom homes in 19 different communities and so we really do think we've found a kind of quality local builder here to assist us. The final materials, we're blending materials and colors across all of our products here, so we will have some approval, of course, the PUD process and the city staff, of course, will have to sign off as well, but just so you know, as they're customized, they still will fit within kind of the architecture and the theme that we're proposing for the overall development. And then our third component is the, what's called the Trailpoint Ridge Apartment Building. So this is 58 apartments, which are essentially workforce housing. 52 of those homes will be affordable to 60% or less of the area median income and then six of those homes, or about 10%, again, will be at a market rate. This product also has underground parking. The site naturally falls from kind of the north to the south and from the east to the west and so you'll see the entry off of Glory Lane and then the access to the garage is kind of through the parking lot as it naturally falls to the southwest there. So this particular building has just a single access for both in and out into the garage and then the remainder of the surface parking you see there. These homes are split between one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom homes. About 50% of them are two-bedroom homes and then about 28% one-bedroom and about 22% three-bedroom. So again, we think we're really providing a nice rich mix of homes here, ranging in size of about 750 square feet to about 1,250 square feet. And that will equate to rents then about $700 up to $1,325 per month. So again, a nice broad kind of offering to the market. So this area or this development then will have a play area, so as you look opposite of Eden Prairie Road, then kind of the back of the building, if you will, we've kind of integrated again that central green area to incorporate a sport court and a play area and connectivity from not only our site, but then into the public trail. That sidewalk that runs, that'll give our residents an access to the trail there. I guess we'll kind of flip to the next slide, if you will. So again, this is a rendering of kind of what that potentially could look like. This is a four-story building with underground parking, as mentioned. Again, shared kind of colors and materials. You'll see kind of that off-orange, I guess, in this particular rendering is kind of the main entrance and that's where, again, they've concentrated their common areas. And so a nice community room, some computer areas and study areas for some children, some team play areas. And so on this particular slide is just a quick showing of, in orange, is kind of that central common area that directly connects then to the rear of the building. So, you know, very safe and very easy to get in and out from the common areas outside to the inside, which is again, kind of a general theme that we've been trying to achieve. So these are just some other communities, basically, that have been built by Common Bond, so we have partnered with Common Bond, very pleased to have them as part of the team. They've been around since 1971. They're in Minnesota, Wisconsin and Iowa right now and they are currently serving almost 12,000 residents. So we're very pleased to have them as part of the team. We really believe that they are, you know, just the best manager of apartments, very well-maintained properties and they also have a very nice supportive services kind of component within their corporation. So they're there really to support residents, make sure that they are kind of advancing themselves through kind of their growth in living and hopefully finding even better housing than what we're providing here. So that's kind of the quick overview, try not to take too much time, I guess. So we're back to the site plan, so I am happy to answer any questions that you might have or, like I say, we do have partners and other developers here to answer any details that you might have too.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, appreciate that. I think instead of questions right now, I think I'll defer to our staff report right now and then we'll come back to you with some questions and comments.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay? Thank you very much. Julie, want to run us through the staff report?
Certainly. Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, as Mr. Nelson stated, this is a development project that includes three different product types. It includes a senior cooperative housing product as well as for-sale townhomes and workforce housing for a total of about 160 residential units within the project. The property is currently guided public and industrial because of the property, vacant property being zoned industrial and the constructed property has a functioning church currently on the site. So the project, while it has three different product types, the city staff has been working with the development team in order to bring forward a proposal that provides continuity and connectivity within the product. So there is certainly been an attempt to incorporate similar architectures, similar color themes, provide connectivity and combination of uses between the different product types, whether that's pedestrian connections or use of the recreational amenities that Mr. Nelson spoke to in his presentation. The Trailpoint Ridge project, portion of the project, I should say, that apartment building that is proposed by Common Bond is seeking some additional funding sources. So as you'll have read in your staff report, that project is dependent upon receipt of funding. If funding does not occur this cycle for that project, then the development team has indicated that they would be back in front of us with a revised development plan, which includes just the Applewood Point portion of the project. So I wanted to share that with you as part of our comments as well. So the site plan, as Mr. Nelson talked about, does include amenities such as public art, connectivity via sidewalks and other pedestrian connections. It does include a sport court and a totlot for outdoor recreational amenities as well as proposal of, for lack of a better term, an activity track around the building. He showed depictions of the different stations that would be proposed as a part of that. One of the other issues that staff has been continuing to work with the development team on is access, both temporary and permanent access to the proposed water reservoir storage tank facility that will be constructed just south of this property, between this property and Highway 212. So the city recently acquired about six and a half acres for the construction of this water reservoir storage facility and Mr. Rue can speak to that in a little more detail, but essentially my understanding of that is it's not a water tower like you see in other portions of the community, it's more of a cylindrical, if that's a word, cylinder-shaped tank. Part of it will be underground, part of it will be above ground. And so the city not only needs access down to that site for construction purposes, to construct that and the utilities that need to serve it, but once it's operational, the city will need daily access to it to monitor the operation of that facility as well. So staff has been working with the development team to try and achieve access to that site through the Smith Village project. There have been several conversations or other alternatives that have been proposed, but no formal defined proposal via other access points has been provided or agreed upon by the city. So one of the conditions of approval that staff is recommending as part of the discussion this evening is that a revised plan be provided to the city that provides access for temporary purposes as well as permanent purposes to the standards as specified in the staff report so that staff has adequate access to that site. The development also includes sustainability features, as you know, that's something we talk about quite regularly here with all developments, including such elements as native plants, an electric vehicle charging station. Bike racks have also been included as well as rainwater collection to be used for irrigation at some of those planting sites within the project. Affordability, as Mr. Nelson mentioned, is also a subject of discussion through this project. So the Applewood Point or the senior cooperative piece of the project is proposing 10 units be provided at 80% AMI for affordability and 90% of the units within the Trailpoint Ridge project would be set aside as affordable units. So staff is continuing discussions with the applicant about affordability. As you know, at your meeting three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we had quite a robust discussion about where the city wants to head in with regard to inclusionary housing and the city council just last Tuesday had an opportunity to have a conversation with the Housing and Community Services Manager about preferences related to an inclusionary housing policy as the city continues to draft that policy and refine it, frankly. So staff is wanting to continue conversations with the developer about what affordability looks like within this project and we would expect to do so between now and coming back at the continued public hearing, as staff is recommending. So there are several items that staff is recommending the public hearing be continued for. One is that revision to the plan to address access to the water storage site. Additionally, landscaping and building materials, there are some performance standards, measures that need to be addressed that there's just not enough clarity quite yet in the plans in order for staff to make a formal recommendation and complete its review. In addition to all of the issues, elements of this project that we've discussed, there are several PUD waivers that are requested as a part of the plan. As you notice from your staff report, there's a waiver being requested for density, a slight increase over the 17 units per acre that is allowed by code, they're at approximately 22 to 23 units per acre. There are several setback waivers with regard to the parking lot and front yard setbacks. This site is unique in that the only front yard by definition is Eden Prairie Road because in order to have a front yard, it has to be on a public right-of-way and Glory Lane is not a public street, it's a private street, so therefore it's a side yard setback. There's also a waiver request for parking with regard to the senior cooperative site, which is not uncommon for other senior projects that we've seen in town. They are requesting, excuse me, let me back up. The code requires two units, two parking stalls per unit and they're proposing, I believe it's 1.62 stalls per unit. So there has been information provided, not only as a part of this application, but other recent applications that the city's reviewed with regard to senior housing that it largely makes sense on most projects to allow for that reduction in parking. In addition, there are waivers with... In addition, there are waivers with regard to lot frontage, as I talked, Glory Lane is not a public street, it's a private street, and then lot depth as well, just due to the configuration of the parcel. So, staff is recommending a continuance of the public hearing to October 8th in order to allow the developer to continue conversations and revisions to the plan to address those elements that have not quite fully been vetted out. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate that. Mr. Rue, would you like to add any commentary about that water reservoir tank that Julie alluded to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's a, as Julie mentioned, the city purchased roughly six acres of land on the opposite side of the regional trail facility there. It's kind of a wedge-shaped or triangle-shaped property. It's a ground storage reservoir site that, it's essentially a water tower, but we're not building it elevated. It's going to be the water, it's a storage facility. It's anticipated to be about 5 million gallons. We might build it in all 5 million right away, or maybe we might build it as two separate, one, one, two and a half to 3 million now, and then, based on demand later, we might build the rest. But, but that discussion is still occurring, whether we build it all right now or not. It's to meet the demand of the, of the city as we move forward. We have two elevated towers now, wire towers. We have one up by Baker Road. We have one that's basically a smaller tower, but it sits on the ground. It looks elevated. It's the same height as the others, it just happens to be on the top of a hill. This one would be similar, but it's going to be a half-buried, half-exposed tank, very cylindrical, large facility. So, the access that we're requesting is to get construction access, as well as operational access to this site as we move forward. And this plan, this project is planned to be constructed beginning next year. So, I don't know if that, is there further questions on that?
Hence the concurrent construction sequence about construction access, because you may be building it concurrently with the developer's schedule.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. All right. I don't know who raised their hand first.
May I ask a question?
Commissioner DeSantis, go ahead.
I have two questions. It's not germane to this discussion or proposal, but with respect to the tank, will that be encased in brick like the one on Mitchell Road?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it'll be, the architecture of that tank is not finally determined yet. We are looking at trying to make it a somewhat of a depot look, because there used to be a former railroad depot in this, in this area, in Old Miller Store. This was kind of a central part of city, so we're, part of the pump facilities that are in this structure, we're, we're looking at the architecture to kind of make it look like a depot and try to bring back some of the historic perspective of this, in this area.
My second, my second question is, you know the proximity of the proposed tank to Red Rock Lake and its adjoining swamp on the east side of Scenic Heights. Do you anticipate any impact on the elevation of Red Rock Lake or the adjoining swamp with construction of a water tank?
No, it'll be, the, the, the tank will be, the tank is in essence, just, it's a storage facility, has nothing to do with groundwater or stormwater. It's water that comes from our water plant and is fed through our, our trunk lines. We have, this happened to be an ideal site because we have some very large trunk lines on County Road 4, and we need those, those facilities to store the water for the whole system.
Commissioner Kirk?
Would it be possible to, to put the graphics back up from the slideshow? So, I'm not exactly sure where that location is.
Rod, could you?
If you can go, if, I think if you, if they go back to the, one of the first overall slides, I think it was one of the first slide or second slide? Okay, that's a good one. So, if you look almost, you can see where they're, the Smith Village site is kind of east and north. So, you see that wedge between where the regional trail is and 212. It gets, okay, Julie's going to go point to it.
Yeah, please.
There's a, you can see the pond that's right to the east there. It's north of that pond and all the way up to about where it says Central Middle School. So, yeah, she can point that out.
Right in this. Rod, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's right in this area, correct?
Yep. It's right in that area, and it extends northerly a little further, but.
Okay, thank you.
So, and we cannot take access off of 212, so we have to have access off of a, off the city street or county road or something, so.
Commissioner Farburg?
Mr. Rue, I got a question. 5 million gallons, what does that equate to roughly above ground? Looking at this right here, this is my own information, I'm trying to visualize how big this is. You know, as far as that, just roughly.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I don't know the exact size, but it's probably maybe 150 to 200-foot diameter, and probably the tank might be 40 feet high, that, in that range.
40 feet?
Yeah, but maybe 20, might be 15 feet below ground and 25 feet above ground.
Good.
You know, it's just a matter of the topography of the land, and there's different design and, well, construction components, if you bury it versus elevate it. But it'll be partially buried, if not, it won't be fully buried, it won't be fully elevated, I guess.
Understood. Thank you.
It's going to be looking at alternatives to that. So, that work is being done right now, the conceptual designs and layouts of that facility.
But I, I hear you saying 25 feet plus or minus something?
Something like that. And now, those are just rough guesses, I'm not sure exactly the size, but when we were looking at these sites, we did go tour some, and there was one we toured in Rochester, they built one. It's, it's a circular tank, just looks like the water tower, except it's on the ground.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rue. Commissioners, let's take a moment if we want to ask any questions of the applicant or staff, again, on project-specific items that we may have heard tonight, or questions you have from the staff report, before we go to a public comment. Commissioner DeSantis?
I have one question for the applicant. I heard one electrical car charging station. Do you anticipate that would be sufficient for anticipated future needs?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, we are, we're starting with that, I guess, as a simple answer for you. I, you know, we will adjust to the market as it, as it demands. You know, so the electrical design of the building will be such that we can accommodate additional ones, but we know that we're starting with one just because that's what has kind of been in demand of the last few projects that we've done. So, but we'll, we'll be able to expand on that if need. Is that good? Yep.
Okay, thank you. Well, you can stay at the podium.
Sure.
I have a question. Did you hold a neighborhood meeting? I see some neighbors that may want to get up and speak later. Could you provide a summary, if you did hold one, and tell us about it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did hold a meeting. It feels like it was a while ago now, I can't remember exactly when, but we did, we held it actually here at City Hall. We had a decent turnout, I thought. A number of folks were from either immediately across Eden Prairie Road, there's, there's a townhome community there, or off of Lincoln Way, there, there's probably seven or so homes that are immediately north of this site. I'm not aware of any others that were from beyond that. And so, there were, there was a discussion principally on just typical kind of, you know, concerns about new, something new happening here. We did have some, some discussions on impacts to the Smith House, and then overall, just potential concerns about height. So, you know, the four-story element of, of the buildings here, the reality of that was a bit of a concern to, to some folks. So, we have tried to set back, as an example, the Trailpoint apartment building, you know, as far back off of Eden Prairie Road as, as we could fit it, kind of in, in response to that. That leaves us kind of a nice green buffer there to kind of landscape and, and screen to the, to the roadway. And then, and then honestly, there was a little bit of surprise to us that there were a number of folks that were there, really encouraging kind of this, this mix of affordability and incomes and, and generations, and that, I think, was generally the summary there. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Mehdi?
One, I have a couple of questions, and I think one or two may be best suited for Julie, but I'll start with the applicant. The calculation for the, for the cooperative with the 80% affordable units that are about $254,000, I'm just curious how that calculation comes about? Is that something given to you by HUD, or the state calculates that, or is that, you know, how, how does that?
The valuation of the homes, yes, correct. Yeah, that's Minnesota Financing Agency typically, in, in, I guess, in collaboration with HUD, probably, but, so that's the number that we are, are told, yes, that's correct.
And then, the other question is, I was reading about how the, the rules of the cooperative will limit the value increase at 2% per year. Is that just for the 40 years, or is that forever?
That's a good question. So, what she's referring to is, so this is called a limited equity cooperative, and so we do, through the bylaws of the community, limit the appreciation of the homes to no more than 2% a year. And the idea there is not only to, you know, kind of maintain the home values, but also hopefully relative to the market, that they be, that they continue to be attractive. And so, the, the folks that are buying our homes, you know, they're not looking for a big condo real estate flip kind of thing. They're, they're, they're at an agent stage of life that they would like their, their money back with a little interest, but at the end of the day, if they decide to move, or they have to move for a health reason, for some reason, then they would like that to happen fairly easily. And so, what that 2% does for us is it allows future buyers who are interested in the community to kind of understand where the pricing might be, say, two or three years down the road. And so, the community is able to maintain a very robust waiting list for that community, and they market that kind of as a, as a community then moving forward. So, that would be on all of the homes, not, not just the, the affordable ones. And because it's part of the bylaws, it should be in perpetuity. I can't say that everything is guaranteed there. I suppose the community could change their mind at some point and adjust that, but again, that would have to be approved by HUD and a few other layers of approvals there with the financing. So, it's, it's highly unlikely, we have not seen that happen. We've been doing this for about 15 years now, I guess, so we have not seen that happen to date.
And actually, one, one more question for you, and I think it's just something that, if everybody read, or may, may or may not have noticed, that there's no way to actually enforce the affordable units that are being sold at the beginning to, to limit who those get sold to in the future. So, the price of them will always remain affordable, but it sounds like there's not a way to actually make sure that unit continues to be sold to an affordable income. And is that primarily due to the HUD loan and HUD not allowing?
Exactly, yeah. So, that's, that's primarily that, yeah, there's, there's a, not to get too into the nuances here, but the, the, we, we can't create kind of two classes of membership, if you will. So, if you remember, this is kind of, this is a corporation that the people are buying a share of, they give them the rights to their home. And so, HUD, it's a very, it might, it'll be difficult if, to not identify those as potentially like a second class of, of membership, which is, which is what we're running into there. So, we can't guarantee that. I think we can always encourage that, and that is something that, as Julie had mentioned, we're still working on through that affordability component with staff a bit, and so trying to kind of iron that out. But, but the reality is, I think, given the home values, you know, they'll, they'll remain where they're at, at least bringing to market a, a good value home, there, there is no ability for a windfall there, so the, the, the next buyer in can't reprice that home to market. It'll always be kind of at that more affordable price, so.
Thank you. And one last quick question for Julie. On, on the height of the Applewood Point, it is 75 feet about. Where is that measured from?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the city just recently revised its definition of building height in order to establish a grade plane for the entire building, and it is measured from the grade plane to the highest point. So, if it's a, depending on the type of roof, it's measured to a different point. If it's measured to a certain point, if it's a Mansard-type of roof, in this type of case where we have a pitched roof, we go to the midpoint of the pitch in order to determine that highest point of building height.
Based on, and then based on the grade plane of the floor plate?
Commissioner Mehdi, that's correct, based on the grade plane.
Thank you.
I just have a quick follow-up question. Is the, the financing and the limit, the 2% limitation, is that typical of the other senior co-ops in Eden Prairie and surrounding communities?
You know, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to our Applewood brand, to be honest with you. I think, I think it is at least 15 years ago when we got into the business, that was kind of the case, but I know, I think there are some more market-driven cooperatives out there as well, so I can't.
But it is consistent with what you're doing in your brand?
Yes, we, that's what we've done on all of our communities, correct?
Okay, thank you.
So, while I didn't, didn't understand all the nuances of, of that conversation, I'm going to ask in a roundabout way, since this is a planned unit development request, Julie, there's going to be a developer agreement, correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's correct.
Okay, so, are there going to be teeth in the developer's agreement encouraging the continuance of affordable housing? But if the developer agreement is no longer enforceable, once this cooperative gets placed and all the members are moved in to the cooperative, does that dilute the enforceability of the developer agreement?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, so I think we're talking about two different things. Development agreement is one, one document, which is a contract that will exist between the city and the developer. The bylaws are a different document that govern the senior cooperative itself. So, if the development agreement is worded in such a way that it requires a certain amount of units be provided at a certain amount of, or level of affordability, that is a requirement that is in place as long as that development agreement is valid. And those development agreements do not have a sunset timeline, so once those are in place, unless the developer asks that it be rescinded, or the property redevelops, or the city considers amendments to those development agreements, which sometimes you see come in front of you or the city council, based on changed conditions, that development agreement would remain in force and effect. So, with regard to your question about the teeth, thinking back on some recent developments that have been approved that include affordable, the provision of affordable units, such as the Prairie Bluff Senior Living, or the Southview Senior Living, most, bless you, most certainly, those development agreements do include language that talk about certain number of units that have to be provided, in that case, in perpetuity, at a certain income level in order to provide that affordability. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any general questions before we move on to the public comment?
Yes, Mr. Nelson, I have a question regarding the traffic impact. As you're well aware, there is a pedestrian crossing over to the west side to Miller Park. There's also a signalized intersection immediately northwest of the proposed property and one to the southwest. So, my question is, you had a stud, you, I assume, commissioned the study by the SPAC consultants to look at traffic patterns moving forward?
Well, we, that was, that was commissioned through staff, so yes, we, we funded that study, but we did not direct it or commission the exact consultant, so that was through staff, but.
My concern is about a property or proposal attracting seniors and people being able to walk safely across Eden Prairie Road, and I'm just wondering about the impact on pedestrian safety.
From, from a traffic standpoint, specifically, yeah. Well, that's fair. I, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, we, we will add some trip count to Eden Prairie Road in this, this intersection, just because we're adding some homes here. You know, I think the good news is that we do actually have these two offsetting lights to, to stop traffic and, and give people kind of a pause in a, in a way to be safe. You know, we are, we've experienced, I guess, in, in our cooperatives anyway, that, you know, this is a, it is an active senior, however, they are not a peak, typically not a peak driver time senior, person. not a peak driver time senior, person, uh, occupant, you know, so unlike an office building or something, uh, that they'll, they'll avoid, uh, peak times if, if able. So I think that helps mitigate overall kind of traffic here on the site as well, if that helps answer your question, you know?
And I'll maybe augment that. Commissioner De Sanctus, I'm looking at the aerial provided in the staff report and it looks like there's a striped pedestrian crosswalk across County Route 4 at the south end of their site over, it's a stoplight at the entrance ramp to, to Highway 212. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, it's the entrance to Miller Park, my apologies. Uh, the driveway to Miller Park is across from their south corner property line and there's a striped crosswalk here, which I presume would have some signalization. Uh, Mr. Rue can clarify that, but for what that's worth.
Yeah, so that, that crosswalk does coincide both with the Miller Park and the regional trail that are both kind of high pedestrian use there, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, good. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, I would like to invite audience members that would like to share any comments or questions to address the podium one by one and give us your name and address. Sir, would you like to step up? Thank you.
My name is Donald Hanson and I live at the Town Homes of North Bay, which is on Timberlake Drive, which is about a block away from this site. Um, and I was told that you would receive this handout in your packet today?
That's correct, we did.
Okay. So, uh, I'm not gonna, it's like seven pages, so I'm not going to, going to read the whole thing. Um, so there's a couple of questions I have, but, but first, I did want to see a rendering. So he has showed, shown a rendering today. I'm not completely happy with it, but it is, it is a rendering. Now, my objection, uh, well, I have three reasons that I'm object, objecting to this And it's entirely about the placement of the four-story building on Eden Prairie Road. So that's my objection. So first, uh, this building, Trailpoint Ridge, is planned to be adjacent and will dwarf three existing treasures of Eden Prairie. And these are Miller Park, the Nature Trail, and Smith Douglas Moore House. Second, there is no existing building of comparable height set directly on Eden Prairie Road along its fur, along its full 5.3 mile length. So I can drive from one end of Eden Prairie Road to the other and there's nothing nearly the, the, uh, the height of this building right on Eden Prairie Road. And finally, this neighborhood, there's really no other place to build. So if you're, if you're thinking, well, we'll build another one just like this somewhere else in the neighborhood, it's pretty well built up. And so to me, it's going to stand out as a, it will stand out and not, not really, really fit into the neighborhood. The common entrance is between the Smith Douglas Moore House, and there's a theater home in there, and the Nature Trail. So, so we got the common entrance there and you already talked about the, the, uh, going across the street, so there's Miller Park over there. Um, now, I, I talk about in this, in this, I talk about visual clutter. And so in looking at the, at the renderings, and I'd like to see more renderings, the way that these buildings are being built today, it's tremendously visually cluttering. I've been over, I went, I drove over to the, or I, I went on the bus to the state fair. There's a building there that is so ugly, uh, it's just, it's just ridiculous. Now, what I say in my document about this is that if you're talking about nature, nature is brown, it's, it's green, uh, and those kind of colors. And there's not blotches. So if you look at these plans here, there's a black here and then there's a square of white and then there's a little green here and there's, and it's ugly, in my opinion. And I've seen so many of these, um, things going out, these big four, four, uh, story buildings and, uh, and it's ugly. And so I've looked at, in my document, I've looked at Elim Shores. So Elim Shores is the only comparable building that I noticed at least along the full 5.3 mile length of Eden Prairie Road. Now, this is a nursing home, similar to what is being proposed here. Now, if you, I, I put some pictures in there of, of Elim Shores and from the road, well, first of all, it's well off the road. Second, it's behind some trees and I've shown some pictures in there of this. And, uh, so you really don't notice it that much. But one reason that you don't notice it that much is that it is camouflage. It's hidden into nature. So you've got the trees, but it's all brown, essentially all brown. So this is a, 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 a building that is, that is, um, uh, well, so for me, if I'm walking on that nature trail, okay, and I see there's black and brown and blue and all these squares of all these different colors, it's terribly visual distraction, it's, it's visual clutter and, um, I would think anyway, what I stated in my thing, that we better paint it, camouflage, uh, earthy tones, have more or less, uh, one color, as is Elim Shores. So the reason that I don't really, um, mind Elim Shores, it's off the road, quite away, and it's all one color basically. So you, you really don't notice it and if you, if you make the color, um, you know, a, a earthy color, then that's, then that's great. So, um, I think, well, is there any questions? I, I am here on behalf of myself. Uh, I am a part of the Town Homes of North Bay and so they may have a comment in the future, but I'm just being my good citizen self, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Would anybody else like to come up and address the commission? Please? Just state your name and address.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joan Halpulis. I live at 8101 Curtis Lane. Um, I was part of that neighborhood meeting because I was very excited to get my postcard inviting me to hear about this project. So I'm one of the people referred to in your description of that, uh, meeting that was there to say, yay, hallelujah, I'm so grateful that Eden Prairie is being welcoming and inclusive and really forward-thinking and responsible for our collective future. I think this planned unit development with the intergenerational aspect of it, with the affordability aspect of it, with all of the common areas on the exterior, on the outside spaces, um, and the access to Miller Park, I'm happy that this, this planned unit development will be right across the road from where I live. My back window, my bedroom window will look directly across to this, this beautiful apartment building that represents our community's commitment to affordability and quite frankly to our entire future as Eden Prairie, because the level of affordability just gets more and more out of reach. And, um, my understanding is there's 68% of the people that live in Eden Prairie, 68% of people who live in Eden Prairie in this moment in time are spending more than 30% of their take-home income on housing. That's not sustainable. So I'm really excited that staff is working so hard with these folks to make sure that the sustainability factors are there, but also the idea and the incredible collaboration of these three individual developers that understand the shared interest for workforce housing, for senior housing, and for these, you know, these six townhomes that are at market rate. They would not be putting that there if they didn't understand the value of the entire project. Those folks wouldn't be buying those homes. So I just want to speak on behalf of the project. I think it's fantastic and I can't wait to see it get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Halpulis. Anybody else from the audience would like to make any comment to the commission? Okay. Let's bring it back, commissioners. Any other questions, concerns, deliberation that would like to entertain on this?
I have, I have one, one item that hasn't, one item that hasn't come up and it involves movement of people in that site. And it doesn't relate directly to our commission responsibilities per se, but I still want to bring it forward. And that is that there are perhaps going to be a number of children attending various schools and school bus activity at that site. And knowing you've, Mr. Nelson, had other developments, maybe not exactly like this one maybe, and hopefully will be, I, I do support it, but, um, if you've given any thought to getting buses in and out of there, or if there's something you've learned in the process of putting these projects together that maybe you could look into further, um, just, we have no idea how many children will be of school age right as they start, but sooner or later, they will be.
I'm Diana Dicey. I'm a project manager with Common Bond Communities and I also have Jess Menton. He's a regional property manager with Common Bond. And we do imagine and anticipate children, um, school-aged children at the, at the housing communities. So potentially one opportunity would be turning right onto Glory Lane and utilizing the cul-de-sac as a turnaround or stopping, we haven't assessed, but stopping on Eden Prairie Road, so it's a great suggestion to look into, um, you know, immediately following this, this meeting.
Yeah, before the project gets too far down the road that you can't look at any other approach that might make sense to the schools or families, whatever. Thank you.
On similar projects that we have like this, it's not uncommon for the buses to come into the project area, to go into the parking lot if there's children that need to be picked up. It all depends on the health and safety, you know, for the, for the infants and so they get on the bus. It seems to be a little busy on that main road, so I would be advocating for something like that.
I would tend to agree, but I don't really know. So just wanted to raise it. Thank you.
Commissioner Freiberg, comment?
I'd like to just say a few comments about this. Outstanding cooperation, outstanding. What we need right now going forward in Eden Prairie, and we're seeing it all the time, affordable housing is not going to go away. Lifecycle housing is not going to go away. And this is an amazing cooperation between three entities. When I see, you know, the effort that went into the planning, what I'm looking in front of me here, and this goes beyond what, you know, about the waivers, this, we're talking the concept itself. The thinking beyond the box is what's going to be needed in Eden Prairie going forward. It's really something that it takes three separate energies. Just think about what you're just doing right there. I have not seen this up here, sitting on the planning commission before, and I'm very impressed with that because we have so little land, you know, and we have such big problems. We're talking about growing, gosh, what do they say? The Met Council says up to 2,040, up to 82,000 people, you know, from our 65,000 we are now. And this type of thinking beyond the box to solve these problems within, you know, within the community itself are going to go a long, long way. So hats off to you.
Mr. Chairman, can I piggyback on that a little bit? Commissioner Kirk, please. Um, I think Mr. Freiberg, or Commissioner Freiberg's comments are, are well-taken, well-spoken, uh, because I, I think we all completely agree that lifestyle housing, affordable workplace housing and all is, is a significant issue for Eden Prairie and will continue to be. And, and it's important that we address that. On the other side, we who have lived here for a long time have an Eden Prairie that we are used to and like. And again, as Commissioner Freiberg said, Eden Prairie's growing and it's going to continue to grow. And how do we, how do we balance these two issues? And, and so the, the downside, um, that, that in fact this project represents to some degree is density and height, because there's not a lot of land left in Eden Prairie, it's very expensive land, and we've got to get more, more dense to make, to make things work economically. And I think that the judgment, my judgment, my personal judgment and, and what this commission is, is chartered to do is balance, balance all of those factors. And again, my personal opinion is we've got to look hard at the height and density and, and continue to challenge it, but I think this project makes a reasonable compromise with the positives of lifestyle housing, uh, workplace housing, that sort of thing, and the density. And that's, I, I support it for that reason. Thank you, Commissioner Kirk, appreciate that. Um, I'll, I'll certainly, I'll, I'll take a question in a moment, thank you. I'll take a question in a moment, thank you. Sir, sir, I'll take your question in a moment, thank you. I share your opinions on that, Commissioner Kirk, and, um, I, I too would like to applaud the applicant group for their cooperative effort and, and I think this is a, in concept, a fantastic plan. Uh, the planned unit development process, um, offers flexibility. And so when we see a list of variance requests from the straight zoning, uh, we're looking for some mitigation to offset those. So, uh, seeing some of the shortcomings in the staff report with regard to landscaping efforts, um, we're looking maybe for some balance there, as Commissioner Kirk put it. Um, if we're, if we're looking at setback variance, knock it out of the park with landscaping there instead. If we're looking for a height variance, provide the buffering to mitigate the consequence. So, uh, that, that's what the planned unit development flexibility is, offering flexibility, give and take. So, so it, that's the spirit in which we want to see these variances requested and presented to us when you come back, okay? Not to say it's a great project, but, but look at those variance requests and see how you can mitigate them, okay? Um, yeah, the others are, I think are minor comments. I, I think it's a great project, great project. Commissioners, any other, Commissioner Mehdi?
Um, I had a few points written down and one of them was actually right along those lines of, I think you're, what you're saying, I, I very strongly agree with. Landscaping's really important here, probably more so than a lot of other sites, just given the, um, the density, the height, its location relative to the trail and, and historic buildings and all of that. So I think that is a piece that I would like to see be, as you said, blow it out of the water. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to actually go on the Mississippi River up in Champlin and I happened to ride by the two other Applewood Point projects that, that the developer has done there. And they, they were really quite nice. After seeing those, I was, I was very impressed. They're right on the river and they, they're currently under construction with the second project because the first one has done so well. And I was with the mayor and the city council there and they, they had just great things to say. So that made me feel really good about the developer, the concept of this cooperative, which, which is a little bit new to me, which makes me question, oh, how does this work? What is this? Is, is doing really well there, so that makes me feel good. Also, um, one point I had with, as it relates to the trail, I think one thing to consider is they're not really showing the, beyond the property line where there is landscaping in an area between the trail and their property. So it'd be nice maybe to get to see a perspective from the trail. I, I have a feeling that this isn't going to be as visible or, or, you know, in your face as one might think, but I think that would potentially be helpful to see that and confirm. And then, lastly, I just wanted to make a comment, um, as we're talking about the waivers, they've requested on the parking waiver for the senior site. From my experience at my company, you know, 1.5 per unit is great. That's like a, you know, good, will go down to 1.3 on a senior housing. So their 1.6 seems in line with what we're experiencing, um, from another company's perspective as well. I do want to caveat that with, this is all two bedrooms and most apartment complexes or senior housing have one bedrooms, maybe where there is more single people with one car in a unit as opposed to couples in every unit. So that makes me... So that makes me question, maybe their parking needs will be higher than some with a bigger mix of unit types, but all in all, I'm fine, and I don't, didn't have any huge issues with any of the waivers requested.
Thank you, Commissioner Mehdi. Commissioner De Sanctus?
Yeah, I just wanted to add an ancillary comment to your discussion about landscaping. I think, yes, aggressive landscaping is needed, but it's not just to mitigate visual impacts, also acoustic impacts. I live in the general neighborhood, and I'm very aware of Highway 212's impact on noise, ambient noise, and it's a significant impact at different times of day, and I think to the extent that your landscaping can provide additional acoustic buffers for residents west, southeast, and east of 212, then you're doing everybody good.
Thank you for that comment. Mr. Hanson, you had your hand raised up, would you like to make an additional comment that's new?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to something that Commissioner Kirk said, and basically, in my handout there, what I say is that, when I was at the neighborhood meeting, what I suggested was, or asked was, why don't you take the four-unit apartment building and turn it on its side, and then have all the four units together, and then take the condos and put them on the street, then you wouldn't have any problem on the street. You know, it'd be two-story, everything would be fine, you have these other things off the street, and you do that. So I don't know what you said that, but I did mention that at the neighborhood meeting, and I have it in my handout.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hanson. I believe that not only we, the commissioners, received your letter, but also the applicant did, so I would anticipate that when they come back with their proposal, they may have comment on that proposal, they may or may not have evaluated that, and maybe the merits don't fit their project, but at least I think it would be warranted next time if they come back and had a comment about that. So thank you for reinforcing that. Sir, in the back row there, no, don't speak from your chair, sir, we would like to hear your voice up here at the podium and have everybody hear it, if you'd like. Please tell us your name and address.
Jason Potvin, Lake Park Townhouses, across the street.
Okay.
No, I was just curious if there's a place, or there's one in Champlin, where are the other projects that we could go look at if we wanted to see the idea of, is that something we can find? Because I'm from Maple Grove, so I don't, where in Champlin is that other project?
The Champlin one's right by 169 Bridge.
169 and 101 or something?
I'm sure they could probably tell you exactly where.
Mr. Nelson, maybe you can just peel off some addresses for the record here.
That's all I was wondering. If we could go and drive, because I'm curious to see what they look like, the renderings look awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Potvin, I appreciate it. We'll try and provide that information to you.
Yeah, I can't rattle off addresses, but I can give you some communities, I guess. So yes, we are up in Champlin, we are in neighboring communities here in Minnetaka, in Bloomington, we're in, you know, New Brighton, Woodbury, Shoreview.
Okay, maybe, could I ask you, within the next few days, to email a list of addresses to city staff?
Sure.
And anybody who's listening to this either by broadcast or here live, if you want to contact city staff, or, sorry, Julie, but that's okay. But if people have interest, just to get that word out, that may be the best way to disseminate that information in case people are really curious.
I can give you a plug for the website, too, if you want to.
Applewood Point dot com, just go there. Sales brochure ready, hit the button.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Commissioners, any further comment, words of wisdom for the applicant? It appears as though the shortcomings in the application warrant a continuance of the public hearing, so we're not going to close the public hearing, actually, but if there are any other comments, I would entertain those at this time before we have a motion made.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Kirk?
Move to recommend a continuance of the Smith Village project based on staff recommendations and information contained in the staff report dated September 6, 2018, and plan stamped dated August 29, 2018, to the October 8 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second.
Who beat it? Commissioner De Sanctus? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kirk and a second by Commissioner De Sanctus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Thank you, and we'll have this item continued at the October 8 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you very much for your presentation, and good luck. Appreciate that. Moving on with our own agenda here, I don't see any planners' reports on the agenda, members' reports, or unless, does a member have a report, I should ask? Seeing none, okay, continuing business, there is none or new. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Weber, seconded by Higgins, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.